Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We have a full agenda tonight, and we have lots and lots of announcements. But before we get started with our presentations, and even before the announcements, I'd like to invite Doreen Stratton to come up. She wants to make some brief remarks regarding a resolution that is on our agenda tonight, Juneteenth. Mrs. Stratton, it's all yours.
Thank you. After a recent conversation with Supervisor Jennifer Herring about Juneteenth, I wish to share information about this cultural holiday. As it is my understanding, there may be approximately 400 African-American residents in your community. My family has lived in Doylestown Borough for three generations. It was not until after my first travel to West Africa in 1999 that I became aware of my ancestral history. In 2015, I began presenting a lecture titled "Out from Slavery." It begins with a journey in the 15th-century Africa to slavery in colonial America, and eventually, freedom for Black people. Historical societies, schools, houses of worship, nonprofit organizations, museums, and senior residential communities comprise the different audiences to which I spoke. Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Liberation Day, or Emancipation Day, is recognized in 47 states, including Pennsylvania. Many of these states celebrate it in different settings, from cultural, educational events, parades, or picnics. The recognition began in Texas in 1865. Texas eventually declared the event a state holiday. During the Civil War, thousands of planters, slaveholders, and their enslaved fled to the state, most of them settling in Galveston and Houston. By 1865, there were an estimated 250,000 enslaved people living in Texas. Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on September 22, 1862, with it becoming effective on January 1, 1863. When Union Army Major General Gordon Wanger arranged arrived in Texas on June 19, 1864, he read General Order Number Three, announcing the end of slavery. The word "Juneteenth" became popular by the freed Blacks after they combined June and 19. I'm passionate about presenting the legacy of my African-American culture. Bucks County is rich with history of 17th and 18th-century anti-slavery citizens who sheltered fugitive slaves. Recent media coverage reported elected legislators at all levels of government are attempting to remove traces of African-American history in our schools. One recent thread is Project 1619. That's the date when the first two dozen Africans arrived in Virginia. And published as a full-length treatment of American slavery in August 14, 2019, New York Times Magazine, which has become very popular. I encourage this Board of Supervisors to issue a proclamation of Juneteenth, joining communities across our nation of this important event in our history. And maybe next year, you'll have a picnic in the park. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to consider the resolution on -- it's on our agenda later on tonight. So you're welcome to stay.
Okay, I'll stay a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Stratton. Okay, we're going to begin then with our presentations. And first up, Bill Lehrer for the zoning hearing board.
We're going to have video. Yes, they're going to show the video.
Okay, then stay seated there, Bill. Don't get up.
So our telecommunications advisory work with the Air Force. So this is it.
So we're just watching movies?
We're watching, yeah, we're watching three movies tonight. Assuming we're not having a problem in the back.
Hello, there, Supervisors. I, first of all, want to wish you all a happy, and healthy, and safe new year from the Doylestown Township Zoning Hearing Board. I also want to thank you for reappointing me to the board this year. I take this board, as I've mentioned many times, to Barbara Lyons and also for the rest of the Supervisors, that I know myself, and speaking for Sam and Mitch, we really take the position that we have here, as far as the zoning hearing board is concerned, as a very important board. With that, I would like to do like we've done in the past. I'm not going to pick out any specific hearing, except for maybe one, but I just want to give you a summary of what the zoning hearing board has done for the year 2020. For the year, we had a total of 16 hearings. Of the 16 hearings that we had, there was one that was denied, there was a hearing that was withdrawn, and all the other hearings that we did have, they all passed. Most of them were done with one hearing evening, a few of them were done with multiple hearing evenings. We did have one hearing that was continued, Monster Tree Service. That hearing was started in August of 2020. That hearing has been continued through the request of the Board of Supervisors and the applicant. We've continued that hearing till April of 2021, because I know you're working with that, the board is working with the applicant. So hopefully, whatever conditions that you guys will come up with, it'll be resolved, and we may not have that hearing. There is one other hearing that was opened up, the Reinhardt-Slawley hearing. That was started in January 18. We continued that to February 25, because we needed some additional drawings from an engineer. Also, there's three hearings that are under appeal, which were not this year. The vertical bridge development, the Weeder, and Atlas Mountain construction. Those three hearings are under appeal, which actually takes the board out of that, and I believe it's being handled by the insurance company's attorney. The interesting part about the board is that we really get into the hearings in depth. We've noticed, though, and the other two members, Sam and Mitch, we've noticed that with the last year, the applicants, if they're not represented by an attorney or an engineer, we've noticed that the applications, there's some details that really should be looked at as far as the zoning or the code office. Not that they're not doing what we need, but there's a lot of items that we see that on the drawings, they're really not done by an engineer. And what happens is that the applicant, when we start questioning them, especially Sam, who is our engineer, when he starts questioning them, there's pieces that are missing, and they can't answer the questions, and they ask for a continuance. So it isn't saying that the code office here isn't doing their job. I think it would be helpful for the applicants, if they're not being represented by an attorney or an engineer, if the code office would just take a little bit more time and look at the application, and tell the applicant if there's additional information that's necessary to have them do that before they come in front of the board. It makes it easier for us, it makes it easier for the applicant. But with that being said, that's pretty much what I have. I don't have any charts to show you, because I know that as a semi-quasi-hearing board, we don't like to get involved in what the, all the minutia of what was happening as far as the zoning board is concerned. There really hasn't been any one real interesting hearing. They were all, as I consider, interesting in themselves and enjoyable to do. Just a quick memory of the, I guess, since my tenure on the board, there's only really one hearing that I think I'll never forget, and that was the hearings that we had for the Oscar Hammerstein hearing. That was, to me, that was a very interesting hearing. Hearing I enjoyed, very educational on my part, and I just wanted to pass that on to the board. But with that being said, thank you very much for your support and your backing as far as the zoning hearing board. At any time, if any members of the Board of Supervisors has any questions, they can always contact me or any other member of the zoning hearing board. Thank you for your attention, and have a good rest of your day.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. I think, I would just say, I think one thing to point out about the zoning hearing board, you know, if you come to our meetings, you listen to our meetings, a lot of times at the end, there's things that come up in our agenda, and it says, this is a matter for the zoning and hearing board. And so, they're kind of the unsung heroes in handling a lot of things. So I want to thank you and the rest of the board for the hard work you put in to evaluate and analyze, you know, sometimes very complicated situations. So, thank you for that.
Good, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, moving on then to Ways and Means. And Brenda Bray is here.
Hello, I'm Brenda Jones-Bray, and I have the distinct honor to serve as the Chair at the Ways and Means Committee. Ways and Means is basically focuses on finance, especially budget, for Doylestown Township. And it's, the committee is comprised of myself, Joseph Delacott, who was just recently appointed or elected as Vice Chairman, Eric Cornwell, Colleen Mullen, Mike Palowski, and Bob Selnic, and Joe Volk. Several of the members, Joe Delacott and Bob Selnic and Colleen, have been on the committee for a number of years, right along with Mike as well. And our two new members this year for 2020 are Eric and Joseph Volk. So, you may be wondering, what does Ways and Means do, and what is their impact on the community during particularly the last year? Obviously, the township administration prepares all the information, but at our meetings, we talk about relevant points that are going on in the community and affecting the finances of Doylestown Township. One of the things that we focused on, of course, was COVID during 2020. And we were involved in reviewing the EIT and other revenues that were impacted by the virus and the pandemic. And we also took a look at expenditures, but to a lesser degree. Another big project this year was a banknote borrowing. A few years ago, when the township building, which we're seated tonight, was built, we needed to reimburse the general fund, or the township did, for monies that were spent on the building. So with the administration and the finance department, the Ways and Means was involved in determining how much to borrow, based on cash flow projections put together by township administration and investments, comparing the banknotes, or comparing a borrowing of a banknote to a bond issue, and then recommendation to work with Public Financial Management, a financial advisory firm out of Harrisburg. A third point that we did, when we continued, and this is about the third or fourth year that Ways and Means has been supporting and working alongside the Pension Advisory Committee's budget recommendation related to retirement, or the pension, for both uniform and non-uniform employees. Another project, multiple year, has been the proposed Community Recreation Center. Where to build it, how to move forward, size, and scheduling, potential scheduling of that facility. We completed a CapEx form for additional bathrooms for Central Park Complex. That was something different for Ways and Means this year, but we talked about it throughout the year, starting in January of 2020. Lastly, but most importantly, and actually, I think, one of the main reasons that the Ways and Means Committee came into being, I think, 15, 16 years ago, was to help review of the 2021 budget capital projects and five-year plan. Again, I want to just reiterate that the township administration and personnel do all the work. We just sit and have conversations and make recommendations and help out in any way that the Ways and Means can. Sometimes that means just helping with transparency, a word that oftentimes not everyone is fond of, but also to make it more understandable, although there are two CPAs on the Ways and Means Committee, and we tend to get stuck in our own jargon from time to time. During the year, I've kind of mentioned it already, Ways and Means work closely with the Pension Advisory Committee on the pension, and then the Park and Recreation Board, related to, once again, the Community Recreation Center. What are we going to do in 2021? Always a good question. And sometimes, we are a little ambitious in our goals when we move forward. During the year, we started learning more about Doylestown Township Municipal Authority, DTMA. So we'd like to have a better understanding of the finances of that particular component unit of the township. There's analysis and benchmarking of salaries and fringe benefits. I believe the Board of Supervisors just approved a contract to have that done by an outside group, but we hope to be involved in the analysis and reading afterwards for future planning for the township. Continued involvement with the Community Recreation Center on the business plan, and also debt, and most immediately coming up, meeting with the architects that are closely working on the design for the proposed Recreation Center. There's a possibility to advance refund of the existing debt, very technical term for most people, but it's just like looking at refinancing your own mortgage. So that's on the list for 2021. We also have had conversations recently at the committee about trying to address or list some service enhancements for the community. That sounds rather nebulous, but what can we do, what can even the township do to better serve residents as far as services or amenities? Also, always keeping cost in mind. And lastly, but again, most importantly, because it has to do with taxes and the income for the township, the review of the 2020 budget capital projects and the five-year plan, which does include the millage or tax plan. This particular task has really developed through the years of the Ways and Means working with the township. There are three long meetings for the Board of Supervisors where many facets of finances and assumptions are covered as we move forward, not just one year, but five years into the future. 2020 was certainly an interesting year for the Ways and Means Committee, as it was for all. Meeting on Zoom and not being able to get together in subcommittees and attending board meetings made it a challenging year. We're all looking forward, the committee, to moving ahead in 2021 with getting back to in-person meetings, although not immediately, we understand that. And to the public, I would like to invite all of you to join us, whether it be on Zoom or come out to our monthly meetings. We meet on the fourth Wednesday of the month, all months except for November, and we're a little earlier in December due to holidays and winter break. If you have questions, we're available. Our information is available, again, through the administration here at the Township Building. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Can we just address the one bullet point on the DTMA? Do you want to come up? I, we want, I don't know, I want to speak for the rest of the board, but I would like to understand what that means from your perspective.
May I?
It's up to you.
Okay.
Whatever you want to do.
Preferably remove it. DTMA is, according to the note to the financial statements of Doylestown Township, a component unit of Doylestown Township. And just to read from even that note, "Consistent with applicable guidance, the criteria used by the township to evaluate the possible inclusion of related entities within the reporting entity or financially interdependency selection of governing authority designation of management and ability to significantly influence operations." So, again, as I mentioned in the video jargon, but it is a component unit of the township, and it's important, it shares employees with the township. We just want to learn a little bit more about it and how it's run. The Board of Supervisors is responsible for its budget and as far as any debt, again, going back to this, to the financial statements.
I don't know what you're reading from, but we're not responsible for the DTMA budget. We do share resources and people and rent, and they reimburse us, or likewise, but they are a separate entity. We have no control over the DTMA. They're a municipal organization, clearly and specifically independent of the Board of Supervisors, so that we can't, I can't, we get their budget, but we have no control over their budget.
Well, according to this note, the Township of Doylestown Board of Supervisors reviews the budget of the authority. Also, the township is ultimately responsible for the authority's debt, and the township's employees provide the services for the community. I'm reading from the financial statements, the notes to the financial statement, Note 1, and that's what really kind of piqued our interest as to just learning more about it. I certainly know that there's articles of incorporation that date back to, I think, 1978 or '72. It was interesting to look at it and find out, see some of the names on, John Carson's in particular was one that leapt out at me. So it's been around for a long time, you know, that information's available. We just want to find out more about it and how the finances relate.
I think that the main question is, you know, you can, we certainly wouldn't discourage you, I'm sure, from learning about it, but it depends on how much involvement with our staff and whatever work you need done with DTMA. You need to go through them and make sure that they approve that type of work as well. So if you're talking about learning more about them by doing internet searches or public documents and things like that, then obviously, that's, you know, not going to affect our staff or DTMA staff. But I think the concern is that we, that we put ourselves into a position of requiring, asking DTMA to actually give us that information when it's not ours to really ask.
Well, DTMA is a public entity, if I understand correctly.
Yeah, you can.
And they have to have a right-to-know officer and maintain a lot of public records. So I would not expect us to have to really trouble them, at least at this point, for information. Certainly in the past, I mean, for the past 15 or 16 years, we've had a really good relationship, and, you know, as far as the administration, working cooperatively, it is never our intent to cause anybody extra work or, I mean, cause anything negative.
So I guess the question is, when you say you want to look into it more, I guess what we really need to know is what are you looking into? Like, what exactly, what exactly do you want to investigate?
Investigate, hmm. I guess we'd like to, we know that there's a line in the budget for DTMA, and just want to look at that. We're looking at the financial statements for DTMA. They're separate, and they also refer to the township. Again, a component unit has certain meaning for accounting, and financial responsibility is a big part of it.
I think it's fair game to understand the relationship, financial relationship between the township and the DTMA, and that's something that is examined periodically throughout the year, making sure we're getting reimbursed, you know, for staff time and all that. It's another story, however, for this board to authorize you to look into a municipal organization we don't have authority to look into. So we can't give you the authority or permit you to do that when we can't do it ourselves, nor would we want to do it ourselves, to what end, I'm not sure what you're looking for, but the DTMA is a totally independent organization. They have their board, they have their budgets, they have their five-year plan, 10-year plans, they have their projects, and they run that organization. I attend those meetings, they run those organizations like a business. They don't have a huge balance in their, in their reserves. All that money is earmarked for future projects. They've done 15 projects since 2017, 15 projects, doesn't even count the commercial projects that come up when, so this is an organization that is fully capable of handling without, well, first of all, we don't have the authority to look into them. And I know from being a part of this as a liaison, these folks know what the hell they're doing, and I don't think they need any ultra-committee or board looking into them, and I think it's inappropriate that we would allow you to do that. And if I've overstated this position?
No, I think it's just, I mean, I think, obviously, I think I speak for a majority of the board, if not all, that DTMA is one that we very much value, and I don't want them to get the sense that we're, it just, it strikes as we're looking into DTMA, and again, I think we're all trying to understand, looking into DTMA for what, you know?
Just to understand, as I said, the business relationship, it's a substantial amount of money, and there's shared employees, it's just to have a better understanding.
But it's their business. It's their, it's their entity, and that's what they're supposed to be doing, not us checking in on them. They're independent, it's like me going to Doylestown Borough and asking them for their, you know, for stuff that I'm not entitled to, it's like a separate entity.
But that's not what the financial statements, that's not what the note says.
Well, I'm not, I don't know what that note refers to, and it sounds, as you say, jargon to me, but I know the financial relationship between the DTMA and Doylestown Township is a very finite one, and that, of course, is fair game for all examinations, but we do that. But it's extremely finite one. It's not, it does not give us license to examine their projects or have input onto what they charge ratepayers, or whether they're going to go for this grant or not. That is their business, and they do it really well.
Understood. I guess perhaps I would ask administration to talk with the auditors to see if there needs to be a change in the note, because it does not.
Possibly, yeah.
You know, it does not have the same meaning what you are explaining as what the note says.
Okay.
And it's in the summary of significant accounting policies, it's Note 1, and it's been there for several years, so maybe the auditors don't understand. But, you know, that's an independent, supposedly, representation as to the relationship between the two. And I understand it's a separate. And I understand it's a separate entity, there's certainly, we've pulled up and looked at, oh, I can't remember what it's called, but basically it's a booklet from the Commonwealth. We've already pulled, as I said, initial organization and know how long it should run, and found out quite a bit of information about what are authorities across the Commonwealth. So I guess I would reiterate that it looks to an accountant that there is some money there that we might want to support and understand in comparison or in relationship to the township.
Well, can I ask on behalf of the board that, should there be some information that you would want to glean from the DTMA, that you bring it to us first before you, like, connect with?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm gathering that this is not something we really should be looking at or moving forward with, so.
Yeah, that's, that's probably true.
So that's an interesting perspective, but I respect that, and I'll take that back along with our liaison, and we'll discuss it the next meeting.
I would just like to say, I value both organizations, both Ways and Means and the DTMA, and you have brought up that note, and I guess I would want to know if there's any kind of liability by having that note, and I think what I realize within the, within the Ways and Means is they are really a strong group that follow governance, and I think that might be driving some of their questions. So if we can just clarify that particular note, I think that would be really helpful for me.
And part of it, I mean, several of us in the Ways and Means have experienced serving public organizations governmental that have worked with authorities through the years. So we had some basic information when we got started, but thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Anybody have any other questions about the Ways and Means presentation? Didn't want to hog the topic.
I do want to mention that good stewardship of our finances is, is one of the most important things that the Board of Supervisors can do, and I want to say, as liaison and as a fellow board member, that the advice, the input, the recommendations that Ways and Means does bring to us is very important and critical to the decisions that we make. Whether we make the decisions that Ways and Means recommends or not, you always inform us of, of our choices and give us as much information as you can, and I do appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, me too. We're really going to need you in the community center. Thank you.
And as we've been there for the past three or four years, we'll hang in there and see what we can do to help out with that as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to the next.
Thank you, Supervisors, for taking the time to view these annual Boards and Commissions reports. I'm Ed Ebenbach, the 2021 Telecommunication Advisory Board Chairman, and I'll be giving the report on behalf of the Board. I'd like to start by thanking the Supervisors again for filling the TAB's open positions. We're once again back to full strength at 5:00. I'd like to start by acknowledging that two of our most dependable and longer-serving members departed during 2020. Keith Peters, who had most recently been the TAB Vice Chairman, devoted most of his efforts to creating programming for us. The Doylestown Health Walk with the Doc series for senior citizens was his doing, and he worked hard to keep our daily broadcast schedule up to date. His contributions were many, and he will be missed. Kurt Kraus, one of the founding members of the Board, retired after almost 18 years of service. Kurt has been our technical guru, the first TAB Chairman, and was instrumental in the design and construction of Doylestown Television. His contributions were enormous and essential, and he will be missed. Importantly, both gentlemen have continued to contribute even after their departure. Turning now to what we've been doing, I will include most of 2019 and all of 2020 in these remarks, as they have together been very consequential years for us. Much has happened. The first big thing was that in mid-2019, we moved Doylestown Television into the new Township building and into an almost completely redesigned and upgraded new broadcasting operation. The second big thing that happened was COVID, which forced all of us to become very familiar with Zoom. In TAB's case, we needed to integrate the technology into our system and make it an integral part of our broadcast operation. We expect that its use will continue indefinitely. Once we were back in operation in 2019, we continued to produce new video programming for use on Doylestown Television and on the Township's website and social media channels, a welcome wagon for new residents, Doylestown Historical Society series of videos, a step onto the trail promotion with the EAC, Veterans Day celebration video, a senior expo with county leaders, and through all of this, we managed to keep the video content on our broadcast day at 80% or above. I'd like to point out that much of this was a result of working with other groups, such as the EAC, the Parks Board, the County, and Doylestown Historical Society. We also continued to monitor the Township's reach on social media channels and found a continued pattern of slow, steady growth, leaving us with over 4,000 fans and followers on Facebook and Twitter at 2020 years' end. Our web streaming channel, interestingly enough, for Board of Supervisor meetings, showed significant growth in 2020, likely due to the coronavirus. We experienced as many as 200 viewers per meeting after March of 2020, more than double that of the previous year. We also made technical and administrative progress over the period as we grew in operational knowledge of our new broadcast system and can show you the video framing format that's now possible in our new system. We made technical improvements, mainly in audio control, though we do regret not being able yet to complete the acoustic remediation project for the Township Meeting Room. We integrated Zoom into our operations, as mentioned previously, and from an administrative point of view, negotiations with the consortium with Verizon to wrap up a new franchise agreement were wrapped during 2020. Turning now to our plans for 2021, we have planned to emphasize our mission to advise Board and staff regarding communications matters, methods, and production. We are working on improving existing guidelines and documentation to share with other groups in this regard. Our emphasis on programming production will also continue, with our hopes to work on a series of coronavirus vignettes, which will detail how residents actually coped with the changes brought on by the coronavirus, a bike and hike trails overview and individual segments videos, a new parks video, a new initiative with Doylestown Health, yet to be defined, and a new connection with the Central Bucks School System. Lastly, we hope to update the long-serving series of who we are and what we do to modern times. We also have a few technical initiatives planned, including completing the Meeting Room acoustic and lighting remediation projects during the spring of 2021. We'd like to improve the camera placement and coverage to facilitate, in the meeting room, to facilitate closer views of meeting participants, and we'd like to expand the operating system knowledge and expand the number of trains operators. In conclusion, it's clear that 2019 and 2020 have been interesting, educational, and challenging years for TAB, and we look forward to the continued challenges in 2021 and beyond. Lastly, if any members of the public who view this report are interested in what we do, we meet in the evening of the second Monday each month, these days via Zoom, but hopefully in person as soon as it's safe to do so. Please contact the Township to learn how you can participate. Thank you.
Nicely done, Ed. Anybody have any questions for the EAC?
No.
No, that's not right.
Thanks for all you do, Ed.
That's the wrong committee.
Yeah.
The Telecommunication Advisory Board. Anything?
I would just say, I'm the liaison, and it's an incredible amount of energy and interest to really help all the Boards who've expressed an interest to communicate either their events or their interests and really elevate the Township, so we're really thrilled. So thank you, Ed, for leading that.
Yeah, and the videos you put together were awesome, and what I notice is how great this color looks for everybody who stood, who sat here, especially Brenda with her scarf from Sheilak. It's a great backdrop for all those videos. Well done.
And those videos will be on TV, too, so you can watch them.
I think it was incredible to see Ed actually in front of the camera. Thank you for doing all that.
I kept thinking you were talking behind your mask, but it wasn't you talking. Any questions, Fred?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, all that you guys do. And then we have Joe Van Houten on well testing. Do you have a video, Joe?
I think Erin has it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yep, there you go, Joe.
It's coming up, Joe.
So I'm here on behalf of the Public Water and Sewer Advisory Committee this evening, and for once, I'm actually not going to talk about sewers tonight, I'm going to talk about water. At the present moment, our committee is focused on private wells within the Township and educating our residents with regards to how to take care of them and what concerns may or may not be there. You may not know, but there are over 2,500 private wells here in Doylestown Township. That's a significant lot of, of private wells. In addition to that, at the moment, the only real requirement there is for testing is part of the septic management program, where every several years, the residents are required to test their well water for fecal coliform. But outside of that test, there are no other tests required. There's nothing at the state level either with regards to management of private wells. So our committee spent a lot of time, did a lot of research, and what we came up with was a educational piece, which we've put onto the Township website. I guess if I throw my glasses on, I can probably see that a little better.
It's right behind you, it might be easier.
Look up.
I don't think it's interactive here, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to swing around here, if you don't mind. Here it is. So if you take a look at the, the subheadings that are there.
No, you're not going to be, Joe, you're not going to be allowed to do that unless you bring that mic right in front of your face.
Yeah.
Just bring it forward. There you go.
How's that?
Perfect.
Ed's running out with a wireless mic.
So the well hygiene basics, and each one of these has a dropdown, as you'll see, and there are videos that we have been allowed to use in conjunction with the Penn State Extension. One of our committee members did some great research, came up with these videos, figured there's no reason to remake the wheel, and Penn State Extension allowed us to incorporate this onto the Doylestown Township webpage. If you can continue to stroll down, you'll see also that there are listing of, you know, why you would go ahead and change, take a look at your well water, whether it's a change in taste or color or odor coming out of the tap. There are different contaminants that you might be able, that you might find in your well water, and again, each one has a little dropdown. There are also licensed laboratories in the area for testing your well. That information is included on the, on the site, along with some other information from the, from the EPA. So again, we just felt that it would be helpful for the residents here in the Township just to have an educational piece with regards to, oops, how to take care of their, their wells.
That's great work, thank you. It's going to be very helpful to the residents. Any questions for Joe?
I just want to add that the Water and Sewer Committee has been working on this for quite some time, and so a lot of our new members who were recently appointed in the past couple of months have really stepped up and helped put this website together and gather the information for it, without, almost without Mr. Bead stepping up. So it's, as with all of our committees, it's really important that we have, that we have these great resources that are our residents, and having them step up really helps us do our jobs better.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan. Anybody else?
I had a question about, and I'm sorry, I'm dropping this on you right now, but I had a question about PFOS.
Yes.
And has there been any discussion on where we stand with the PFOS testing and how we, any recommendations that you are looking into as far as how we handle testing with our, our private wells?
So at the, at the moment, there are no, there's not even an EPA standard yet for testing of the, the public water system, and Keith Haas could speak better to that, but as, as Vice Chairman of the Municipal Authority, I can tell you that our public wells are all currently tested to, to the current standards. We have read that hopefully sometime this year, EPA may come out with some standards regarding that, but if a private well owner did not go ahead and take the initiative to have their own water tested, they would not know if there is any PFOS or PFOAs in their water. And if it wasn't for the fact that the EPA added it to a list of contaminants to check for several years ago, all those people in the, around the Willow Grove Air Station would probably still be drinking, you know, water out of their wells that was contaminated and not knowing it.
Do we have that recommendation that we, that people consider testing for it on our webpage, or is that something that the?
Well, again, our, our committee decided it was more from an educational standpoint, being that there are no regulations at the state level, but we do recommend, we do have a list of contaminants that people may want to go ahead and test for, and I believe the PFOS and PFOAs are some of those.
It is. Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, it's a great educational tool for the Township.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other questions?
No, thank you, good job.
The only other thing I would like to add, as I had mentioned, I am the Vice Chairman of the Doylestown Township Municipal Authority, and we would just like, on behalf of the Board of Directors and our Managing Director, Keith Haas, I would just like to thank the Board of Supervisors for the continued vote of confidence. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Joe. Thank you. Is that it? No, Pension Advisor.
Pension.
Ed Denton. Are you live or are you a video?
I'm live.
I can't keep track.
All right. So I'm going to be updating you on the new executive summary report for the employee pension portfolio. Is that going to show up on the screen?
It should.
We were, we were provided your screen.
Oh, good, yeah. Great, so, perfect. All right, so moving on to slide number two. Yep, all right, the, the purpose of this report is to update the Board of Supervisors and the Township Management on the financial status of the Township's $25 million pension portfolio. Obviously, a lot of money, but two or three times the value of this building here. This report will be produced once per year. The report's focus is on four metrics. The first metric is the current status of the pension surplus slash deficit and funding percentage and the trends over time. The second metric is the, is tracking the investment returns versus the discount rate assumption. The third metric is evaluating the investment returns versus a benchmark which we developed, and the fourth metric is monitoring the annual pension contributions and withdrawals. Next slide. All right, as we've discussed before, the pension plan's discount rate is one of the most important assumptions that go into the pension plan calculation, and it should be aligned with the investment portfolio's expected future returns. A lot of times, I get confused. The pension, the Township's Investment Advisor, Deb Brady, the Pension Consultant, Jim Kennedy, and the, and the PAC unanimously agree that the discount rate target for the Township should be 6%. Next slide. All right, so the, the PAC recommended last year that the Township gradually lowered the discount rate every two years to a target rate of 6%. Now, why every two years? The reason why every two years is regulatory restrictions only allow Townships to change their discount rate assumption every two years. The PAC also recommended that the Township continue to make these extra mortgage payments of, but, but going, moving forward of $160,000 in the off-year. The effect of these, these extra mortgage payments is it lowers the effective discount rate in that year by about a quarter percent. Next slide. We, Deb Brady brought this slide along with her, with, to our meeting last March, I know it's a couple of months ago, March. It shows the pension return assumptions for Fortune 500 companies versus state and local governments. As you can see, all right, so the... As you can see, all right, so the, the gray, the gray, that's the S&amp;P company, the S&amp;P companies, and as you can see, starting about 2002, they started rapidly lowering their discount rate down to about, close to 6%. Unfortunately, state and local governments have been slower to adjust their pension return assumptions versus, you know, as compared to the S&amp;P companies, and the, and there was, the consequence of that is that the number of pension plans have significant deficits. Next slide. Here's a question that came up during a, during a recent PAC meeting, and I apologize, I caught an error in this slide, so I'm going to walk you through the corrections in terms, all right, so, so, so anyway, is the, the impact of the actions that the township has taken since 2018, the number should be 993,000. And what the difference is, is we didn't, we didn't lower the discount rate until, didn't become effective into 2020, so that 160 in 2019 shouldn't be there. So that's, that's, that's the one correction. And then the, the township's been making the extra mortgage payments, you can see those amounts. And then on top of that, the township's been getting investment returns off of these increased, increased contributions. So the first year, you know, obviously, the, we had, we had a negative result because the portfolio returned at minus 6.44%, but 2019 and 2020, strong stock market results. So that resulted in the, the investments earning an additional $82,000 in, in 2020, an additional $84,000, so basically bringing in an additional $157,000 in terms of investment returns over that period of time. So that's, that's great news, and certainly will help our situation. All right, moving on to the next slide. All right, so this is the first metric, and this metric shows the pension plan surplus and deficit and funding percentage over time. Now, this chart shows that the pension deficit's assuming a 6% discount rate any, every single year. And the reason why we did this is because we thought this was, showed a more realistic picture, and also allows us to have an apples-to-apples comparison of each year. So as you can see, starting in 2018, 19, and 20, the strong stock market performance over the past two years, coupled with the aforementioned actions I mentioned that added about a million dollars, have reduced the estimated pension deficit to 5.5 million dollars, which is the lowest it's been since 2014. On the bottom of this slide, you can see that the funding percentage is now 82%, and that's up from a low of 64% in 2015. Next slide. All right, so this is metric number two. And basically, what this is doing is looking, as I indicated before, that the pension, the investment returns should equal the assumed discount rate. So the blue bars represent the, the, the returns of the stock, of the pension investments each year. So if you look at, starting in 2010, the return was about 3%, obviously, that's well below the, of the discount rate assumption of 8%. Then it's a minus, minus 2%, then it's 12%, then it's 14%, and then in 2014, it's a little over 6%. Now, that red line there, what that, what that is, that's a, that's a, a five-year, it's a five-year average for the previous five years, and each of those data points is a rolling average. So for example, in 2015, that, that point goes down because it encompasses 2011, 2015, it goes back up for the five years ending in 2016. So as you can see, together with the, you know, you can see both the five-year average and the, the individual returns vary quite a bit. Long story short, is over this 11-year period, the, the investment returns from the pension portfolio is 7.12%, which is below the pension plan's discount rate assumption of 8%. And that underperformance is the primary reason, as we've discussed before, that drove the, that drove the current pension, or the current and over the last couple of years, pension deficits. Next slide. All right, this is for the non-uniform employee pension plans. Basically, it's the same story here, I'm just going to move forward. Next slide. Okay, this is metric number three. What metric number three is, is it compares the investment returns versus the benchmark that the, that the Pension Advisory Committee developed. And that's to help the township to evaluate Deb Brady's performance. Generally speaking, the returns from the township's Investment Advisor, Deb Brady's strategies should, should, are expected to equal or outperform this benchmark over time, including fees. The benchmark is comprised of the following. Equities is 65%, and those equities are the, the MSCI All Country Weighted Index, which is basically a conglomeration of a diversified representation of 2,000, sorry, 2,200 large and mid-cap global equities, and then a bond component, which is 65%, sorry, 35%, and that's the U.S. Aggregate Bond Index. So let's take a look at how, how the township's investment performance did versus each of the benchmarks. So if you look at the first year, the one-year return, which is for the year ending December 31st, 31st, 2020, is the township earned about 11% on its pension portfolio, and that's versus a benchmark of almost 14% below the benchmark. Let's look, if we move to three, the three years. Three years, the township earned about 7.5%, which again was below the benchmark of 8.6%. Looking at the five-year returns, the township earned 8.8%, again, below the benchmark of 9.7%. And for over 10 years, it was 7.3%, which again is below the benchmark of 7.5%. Next slide. This is the final metric. So what, what this looks at, this looks at the, the contributions for each year versus, into the pension plan versus the, versus the withdrawals. This is for the uniform, the police pension. So in 2020, $798,000 went into the police pension plan, and where that money came from was about $94,000 came from the officers themselves. $451,000 came from the township, that's the MMO payment. And then there's the extra mortgage payment, which is about $56,000. And then $197,000 came from the state. Again, that totals almost $800,000. The withdrawals were about $595,000, that went to the, to the, to pensioners, and then the, the advisors' fees, which is $61,000, actuarial fees, $5,800, and the insurance fee of $5,800. So total withdrawals were $668,000. Next slide. All right, this is the, this is the same slide, but for the non-uniform. Total contributions were $581,000. You can see what the composition there was, pretty much similar, but different, you know, similar story, but different numbers. But one of the things that is different about the non-uniform pension, as, as many of you know, is that in 2012, all new hires basically were moved into a defined contribution plan. So, so one of the consequences of that is that in the future, as non-uniform employees who participate, who are grandfathered and participate in the defined benefit plan retire, the employee contributions, in this case, for this year, is almost $67,000, and the state contribution in 2020, it was $172,000, that will gradually decrease and eventually reach zero. So, and then as that happens, obviously, the payments to pensioners will go up. And so, and so that will gradually increase as the individuals covered by the pension plan retire. So ideally, the, you know, the, when the last retiree, the last employee who's recovered by the pension plan retires, you know, the township is really, it would really be a good idea if, if the pension plan were, were fully funded at that point. So we're not, we're not paying into perpetuity. Next slide. All right, so this is something we developed, and we've talked about it a little bit before, but we, certainly pensions are complicated, and so in an effort to help educate the Board of Supervisors, Township Management, employees, and anybody who's interested, we developed the Pension Plan Frequently Asked Question and Backgrounder. You can see what the topics are there, it was included in your pre-read. I'm not going to go over that information, but it's, it's there for your review. If you have any questions on it, certainly, we'll be, be more than happy to answer your any questions. Moving on to the next slide. All right, so this is another question that came up recently. And this was in connection with the, with the financial statements that came out at the end of last year. This is the financial statements for the, for the pension plans. And the question was, is that are the township's pensions 98% funded, or are they 82% funded as of the end of the year? Well, as we've discussed before, and in earlier in this presentation, the, the current pension plan assumes a projected future rate of return, i.e. the discount rate of 7.75%. And as we've discussed, is that understates the true projected pension liability and pension deficit, and overstates the funding percentage. Doylestown Township is actually the one who provides that assumption to the actuary. The Investment Advisor, the Actuary, and the Pension Advisory Committee unanimously agree that a more realistic assumption for these future projected rate of return, you know, i.e. discount rate, is 6%. Using a 6% discount rate results in a projected pension liability of approximately 30, 30.5 million, a deficit of 5.5 million, and a funding percentage of 82%. Next slide. All right, so moving forward is our next, we, we have a, we meet with Deb Brady twice a year. We meet with her at the, in March, and we, we review the pension performance for the previous year, and that happened this past March. We also do a six-month review, that will happen in August. Starting this, starting next week, is we'll be working with the township to draft and issue a RFP for the Pension Advisory Services, and then we'll be assisting the township in reviewing the responses of that RFP. In terms of the 2022 budget and five-year plan, is that the, the PAC continues to recommend that the township continue to follow last year's recommendation to gradually lower the pension plan discount rate to 6% by 2028. And finally, we will also be working on a continuing education presentation for the board and the township management to try to identify and quantify additional actions that the township could take to fund the plan.
Thank you, Ed, that was extremely helpful.
Sorry?
It was extremely helpful, thank you.
Great, great.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I just have one comment. Ed, I believe at the Pension Advisory Committee, the committee agreed to request, make a request to the Board of Supervisors to move forward with the RFP.
That's right. Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, thank you, thank you for, I forgot about that, yes, that's right. So...
I think we should do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
Definitely.
Go for it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Dan, good? Okay, all right.
I'm all good, thank you.
Is that it? I think that's it.
Other visitors?
Any visitors or public comment? Okay.
I, I had a comment to make. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
We can hear you, Colleen.
Oh, okay, hi, thanks. I just wanted to note a couple of things, but first, we, the Zoom participants missed quite a few slides on the Pension Committee. I'm not sure if everyone in the room recognized that, so I just wanted to point that out for, for, just so people know. But I, my name's Colleen Mullin, as many of you know, I'm on a few committees here, and I'm here to support Brenda Bray and Ed Denton for their presentations from both Ways and Means and Pension, of which I'm a member. I just want to say thank you to all the board members. You continue to work with us as volunteers, and you help us promote transparency, and we appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that as community volunteers. And I wanted to thank the Township staff and Stephanie for all the work they do in collaborating with us. And finally, I, I just want to say, I'm here to support both Supervisors, Herring and Wood, I believe, are both here to propose that resolution for the township to recognize Juneteenth as a holiday. Just not to belabor the point, but I believe holiday, celebrating the emancipation of all those that have been enslaved in the United States, is a day we all should recognize and we all should celebrate. And I would hope that the township, the full board, would see that, agree with that, and approve, and go forward with that resolution. It encompasses all the values we believe in here in the township, freedom and justice. And I thank Ms. Stratton for sharing her perspective with us today as well. So, not to belabor the point, but I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to the announcements. Our next meeting is June 15th, it's going to be at 7:00.
Oh, sorry, I didn't have a chance to, um, sorry, comment. I, I didn't know if I should have used the raise hand feature or not, but, um, my name is Heidi Rue, and I'm a resident of the township, and I just wanted to quickly comment that I would support the Juneteenth celebration here in my new hometown. We've been, we bought a house in August 2020, and I'm excited to be part of this community and get involved.
Well, thank you, and welcome. Anybody else before I step on toes again?
I think someone else, right here.
Hi, I just wanted to share real quick, too. I'm not a township resident, I live in the borough, and I just am here to support the Juneteenth initiative as well, as a borough resident and somebody who's involved in borough politics. I know that it's being presented in the borough as well for us to adopt it, so I do hope that it's something that we can do together, the township and the borough, together, because it's something that's so important, and we have a very rich history when it comes to Black history. So I'm so glad that it's been brought up, and I hope that we can go forward with that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm Judy Dixon, I am a Doylestown Township resident. I'm also here to support the Juneteenth resolution for a holiday. I think it's a great idea. I think it's an inclusive idea, and I think it's something we should move forward with.
Thanks, Judy. I'm going to wait another three seconds.
If I could just jump into, since Bob Repko, since everybody's offering their own comments, I'm also very supportive of the Juneteenth resolution, and I'm here not only as a resident of the township, but to support our supervisors and all of our different committees and hear what's going on, but I do think that it would be a very valuable and wonderful resolution to see our board pass and support a very significant event. So thank you.
Thank you, Bob Repko.
Thanks, Bob.
All right. Anybody else? Okay.
And I, too. Elizabeth Thomas here, I'm a resident of the township, and I attended to support the Juneteenth. I think it's very important that, since we, we didn't learn our history correct from our days in school, I think it's very important that we have this as a holiday, so everyone's aware.
Okay, thank you. Is that everybody?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, on June 15th, at 5:00, we're having our budget meeting. And then we're also going to have budget meetings on September 21st, October 5th, and October 19th at 5:00. And all those meetings are going to be here in the, this meeting room. We're going to be closed on May 18th for Primary Election Day, and on May 31st for Memorial Day. Upcoming township events, we've got the Home Run Derby on May 13th, that's going to be at Turk Baseball Fields, and you need to preregister at DoylestownRec.com. And the 2020, 20, excuse me, 2021 Thompson Performing Arts Series begins on May 26th. The Central Bucks High School Jazz Ensemble will be performing at the CNN Amphitheater in Central Park. On 6/16, on June 16th, Midnight Rock Show. On June 23rd, the Laurel Canyon has a Crosby, Stills, Nash &amp; Young Tribute. And then on 6:30, Big Chill is a classic rock. And look forward to, more towards the end of the summer, there will be movies also in the park. Leaf and Yard Recycling is a third Saturday of each month from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the drop-off site at New Britton entrance to Central Park. And 2021 Bucks County Household Hazardous Waste Collection, you must, you must register. The one in Central Bucks, which is, is on the 26th of June, and it's going to be at CB South High School, but please register. Look on our site, it's an Eventbrite site, so look on DoylestownPA.org, and you will find the, the link. All right, next item on the agenda is the minutes approval for the Budget Work Session notes and the regular meeting on, on April 6, 2021. Everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes and the notes for that, that meeting, for those meetings?
Yes.
All right, for the, for the budget meeting? I heard somebody.
I, I had a...
Hi, Dan.
I had a correction delay. So, sorry, the...
So, sorry, the echo's throwing me. I have a correction to make on our minutes meeting. It says under Section 3 for minutes approval that the motion was passed forward to zero. It should read, uh, passed three to zero with one abstention because I was not a participant in the March meeting, so I didn't feel it was appropriate for me to vote for this.
Thank you. Stan's corrected. Thank you, Dan. All right, now, let's do the minutes, meeting notes.
I think you need to vote on that one now.
I'm going to do the meeting notes for the budget session on April 6. Is there a motion? Dan, was your correction to the, to the minutes or to the meeting notes?
No, his, that was the regular meeting.
Okay. I'm going, I'll just do the meeting notes, meeting notes first for the budget session. Is there a motion to approve them?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of the approval of the minutes, I mean, notes for the meeting, budget session meeting? Call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention, thank you. Onto the minutes for Tuesday, April 6. There's a correction to the vote, and we noted that already. Thank you, Dan. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for April 6 with that correction?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. One abstention.
Aye.
One abstention, thank you. Okay, moving on to correspondence. Arbor Day Foundation, Tree City USA, what is this, like the 20th year in a row?
It is 20th year in a row, and on April 24th, we held our annual Arbor Day tree planting. Thank you to all the volunteers that were there to assist, and just wanted to share that with the board once again, being recognized as Tree City USA.
Okay, thank you. This might be a good time to bring up, we got a letter from the EAC, Jim Baldisari, and concerns about the location of the, potential location of the REC Center down by the, the old forest area down near Central, New Britton area, Central Park. And I think the, and I think it's fair to say, the committee has discussed this, the committee working with the, with the architects and the feasibility people, I, we think it's best to relocate our plan to have a sent, community center centered here with this administrative campus. So the building would be situated where the current courts are. So that's what we're working on now. We think it's going to be less expensive, and we also think that it's going to be more conducive to the campus feel, the open space air, you know, feel to the, to the Central Park down there. And hopefully, like I said, it's, it might be less expensive than at that location. So we're, we're looking at a plan that would include the building on, well, the current sites where the trailers are and the courts. And we're looking at three options, and on June 15th, the experts that we hired are going to be here to make a presentation on, on three options. And I'm very, I'm, these are really brief. I mean, I'm like, one option would be no gymnasiums and just, you know, meeting, you know, all-purpose, all-purpose rooms and that sort of thing. That option, and like I said, this is just thumbnail, it is a, it's like a 10,000 square foot, and that's about 4 million, 5 million. If, with another 400,000 square feet, 400 square feet, it's another, it'll come to 5 million. Then there's a second option with a smaller gymnasium, and the small gymnasium being almost 7,000 square feet, and that's a price tag of 6.3 million. And then the third option is the 8,000 square foot gymnasium and the, and the ancillary rooms that we would need for parks and recreation, for like a 7.2 million. So we're going to examine all those options at the meeting on, on the 15th and with these presentations, and we're also hopefully going to have some financial support for each option as we, as we, as we also address this, these options on June 15th. Did I get everything? June 15th. Thank you. Okay. So if you remember the budget meeting last month, I, you know, I was not happy to go from like we thought was going to be a $4 million building to a $7.2 million building, but what happened was that initial number did not include our site costs, and everything just got more expensive than the initial look, see by the Ways and Means a couple years ago. So we are, we've taken a more realistic look. We have these numbers. These folks we're working with are very good, you know, digging down into what this is going to, what these options are going to cost. So we feel fairly confident that on June 15th, we're going to get, we're going to all be a lot more informed. So thank you for letting me update you on that right now. I wasn't planning on it, but I think it was a good. Thank you. Does it follow Mr. Baldisari's letter? We're not, we're going to move it. We're moving it, EAC, we're moving it, so I think that's, it's a better location, right?
Well, we're going to vote on moving it, right?
I don't know if that needs a vote. Does that need a vote?
Well, we voted to place it in New Britton on New Britton Road.
Would see.
Yeah, we'll find out in June 15th. I just want to say we can't overpromise.
We, we'll vote.
Deliver more than you promise as opposed to the opposite.
Right.
Right, who knows? Now I lost my second.
I think we'll probably vote on the building. It's like you got, we'll, we'll present you guys with all the different options, you know, and then we can kind of go from maybe, hopefully, hopefully we walk out of the June 15th meeting all.
All happy.
Yeah, all on the same page about how we're moving forward because it's been a long, long process.
It has been.
But, but MKSD has been awesome, going back and forth with us. They, they do a lot. So they've been, they were, they were a great pick, I would say.
Yeah. I do have to say that the, the shock of the last budget meeting of the price of the building going up to 7.2 million, is that right?
Yeah.
I am just very grateful that we're going through the process that we are right now so that we know ahead of time what we're getting into instead of stepping into a project and getting in over our head before, when it's too late.
We, we will have everything we need.
And that's the top of the, I mean, there's other options too. It's like five, six, or seven is basically what we're looking at, so.
Yeah, I just gave you the tiny, little, little bits.
Thank you.
Oh, no, thank you. All right.
I appreciate that as well, being informed.
Oh, you're welcome, Dan.
A heads up on that. Little, little less sweating going into that meeting.
There you go. All right, next item on the agenda, reports from the solicitor.
Kathy has a question.
You need to say it to the microphone.
Just a quick question. So the June 15th meeting, is that the public meeting that was going to be held?
Yep, here.
Up here? And that will be advertised? And, and do we know, will a decision be made that? Or is that an input meeting? Or is that?
No decisions. We're just going to get informed.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's our regular meeting, our next regular meeting. So they're going to make a presentation before the regular meeting.
Okay, okay.
All right, that's it. Thanks. You're welcome. Solicitor?
The only thing I want to bring to the board's attention is we will need to do a special meeting. I think we're talking about May 28th during the day, it could be all done by Zoom, related to the need to adopt the 537 Amendment to facilitate the Doylestown Walk Project, which will go significantly towards contributing dollars to reduce the cost of the public sewers in a major project that's underway in that direction. So we'll also be considering a pump and haul agreement, which will facilitate all of that until the pump station's finished and the lines are finished. So I think Stephanie will be back to the board on what time. I think it won't be a night meeting because we're getting into the Memorial Day weekend, but it'll be a day meeting. It should be 10 minutes.
Okay. Correct. Zoom.
We don't have a time on that?
No, we can, if we want to set a time now, that would be fine with everyone's schedule, but I know it's the start of Memorial Day weekend, so we want to get it advertised and, and have that scheduled via Zoom.
11?
So everyone's away. 11 o'clock is.
That works for me.
11 a.m. Friday the 20th, it works for me.
Yeah, because they're.
Dan, you good with 11 a.m.?
And you'll send the information on the Zoom?
Yes, I'll send everybody the Zoom link. It'll be a meeting by Zoom only.
Yeah, I should be all right with that.
Yeah, and it'll be by Zoom only.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I have.
Okay, Township Engineer.
Nothing to report at this time.
Chief?
Nothing to report.
Director of Operations.
Just have a few items for you to review and consider. First is the 2021 Kits Castle Project Areas A and B. This is a project for improvements to Kits Castle. Kits Castle, or Friends of Kits Castle has reviewed this proposal that I'm for you to purchase play equipment for these two areas. It includes swings and more play equipment for what we're calling the 2 to 5 area. It is from George Elean Associates, and it is in the amount of $26,695. It has been reviewed by the Friends of Kits Castle Chair, Mr. Salvati, and he has approved it. This is a purchase through Elean as part of their CoStar's contract, so we've done this before, and I'm asking for the board's approval.
Well, thank you, Dave. Is there a motion to approve the contract award to George Elean Associates of $26,895?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank Mr. Salvati as well. He's not here, is he? All right.
Just a quick item that we had the Kits Castle assessment, condition assessment completed by Penoni Associates. That report was in your packet, generally found no major findings as part of that. There were recommendations for maintenance or reinspection. At this point in time, one of probably the biggest concerns is we found some growth on the, on the structure. We do have a proposal from Penoni. It is in the value of $1,300 for them to take samples and test it just to determine what it is and how we should treat it. So that, I'm not asking for the board's approval. I think the board could, could acknowledge that that's been received and that the amount that Stephanie Mason, the manager, can approve, and we're going to move forward with that.
Yeah, thanks. It was not a bad assessment.
No. And, and there's recommendations for assessments and reevaluations in the future.
Okay.
And we'll continue to do that.
Thanks. Everyone had a chance to review it, I'm sure. Okay.
My last item is the 2021 Road Program paving bids. We opened the bids on Tuesday, April 27th. Received, how many, Sean? One, two, three, four, five bids were received. James D. Morrissey is the, the low bidder. The amount, including the base bid plus all add alternates, totals $695,709.85. That is all roads in the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge neighborhoods, includes base paving and wearing course on the first sections that were done. I'm asking for the board's approval of this contract.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the award of $695,703.95 to James D. Morrissey for the 2021 Road Program paving contract?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Wait.
Aye.
Dan, you shaking your head no?
No, he said aye.
I'm shaking my head no.
You said you're doing this? Aye, you're doing.
I want to get that answer.
Don't confuse me, it's late. Thank you, okay. Township Manager, anything?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, Supervisors. Nancy?
I have nothing to report.
Jen?
Well, two of my committees that I'm liaison for presented today, so I think they did a good job themselves, and the other one is the Planning Commission, and I think that they're coming up on the, in the agenda later. But I did want to publicly thank Chief Logan. I had asked him a lot of questions about the directives that the police use and our accreditation process, and he took his time to explain the process to me and work with me on the directives, and I'm looking forward to working with him in the future. Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ryan?
Nothing for me.
Dan, you have anything?
Yeah, I'll try to do this without an echo. I just want to thank all of our volunteers who came out at the end, the end of April, where we had our Arbor Day planning, as well as our native plant garden workday. The gardens starting to come together after a long winter and a COVID season of neglect. So we're getting that straightened out, and we've been having tons of volunteers. It's been going really well, and I would invite anyone in the township who has an interest in gardening to come out. It's the last Saturday of each month from 9 to 11 o'clock. I know nothing about gardening. There are plenty of people there that will happily tell you what to do. And I also just want to bring up that we have an opening on our Public Water and Sewer Board that we would like to fill. So if you're interested, please contact the township. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Is that it? All right, next item on the agenda.
Did you ask Ryan?
No, he asked me.
I asked Ryan, she had no. Thank you. Stephanie, you want to discuss the next item on the agenda on the general obligation note?
Yeah, certainly. The board will recall that we borrowed $3,038,000 last year, Series 2020, and we did it in two tranches, and we're asking for the second tranche of $1,401,699.06 at this time.
Okay, everybody understands the requisition here? Any questions? You good, Dan? Is a motion approved?
I'm good.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, request to hook up on 500 North Shady Retreat.
Yes, the Calhoun Group purchased this property. It's an much older home from the 1800s and has a too small of a septic system. There is public sewer out in front of the property, and they are hoping to connect. We need to send it to DEP.
Okay. Is that all the action we need?
We need approval to do that.
Is there a motion to approve sending the, request to hook up on 500 North Shady Retreat to DEP?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, then the sewer project, Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority is requesting payment number 23.
That was reviewed by the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge Subcommittee, and they did recommend authorization for payment number 23.
And that's in the amount of $147,958.79. Is there a motion to approve that payment?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is?
It's a request for an extension to the project at seating, pardon, 60 Meeting House Road to July 23, 2021. Project is moving along. It's been to the Planning Commission several times, so they're not really dilly-dallying, so I plead to STF and REC and the board to grant their request for the extension.
All right, is there a motion to grant the request for extension as stated by the solicitor?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Juneteenth Freedom Day, we received the resolution. Heard a lot of people speak to it. Is there a motion to approve Juneteenth Freedom Day?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay. Next item on the agenda is the Summer Concert Series Beer Wine Garden Proposal. Where'd this come from?
This came from work and rec. This came from work and rec.
It, it's really nice. I got some problems with the, the liability aspects of it, but...
I did, I did, for the better for the board, I did peruse the vendor agreement. Had some things in it, so...
Oh, you've done it since we received it?
Yes.
Yes, and also it's been reviewed, and we also shared it with, um, PERMA as well, our insurer.
All right. Well, I'm not sure what I have then, but I've got some markups myself.
Let's, let's just approve. If you want to go forward, to approve that, the agreement, we can just deal with...
When we have a vendor.
We have a vendor, and then we'll take your comments under...
So what are we proving now? The concept?
Approving, yeah, approving, uh...
The concept having a beer wine garden in Central Park. Just Central Park, right?
At the concert.
Central Park at the concert series. I would like to make that motion. I will second that motion. And I just want to add that, you know, obvi, I think it's a great idea, but I also want to commend the work because they have really made an effort to prioritize fundraising, and this is kind of the first step into that. And I think it's going, they're, they're all in. They're all going to be a part of it. I mean, they're talking about who's going to be doing what there, so, um, I think it's awesome. They're, you know, they're fully engaged, and I fully support it, so I second that motion.
I, I have to say, I, I'm with Ryan on this. I think this is a very exciting thing for the township to do in order to fundraise for our park system and to engage the public. It's something that I think Stephanie, Kathy Brown, and Karen, and I saw when we went to that one, uh, was it, uh, meeting, a convention, uh, was very, uh, successful in other, um, regions, and it's, it's wonderful to know that we're moving forward with it today.
I would also add, they've got a fabulous, um, concert list to add to that, so it's going to be great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great job.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor of the concept? Say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? No.
Aye.
No?
No, aye.
I have an aye. Don't say no, I have an aye.
But, sorry, there, there's like a two-second delay from when I speak in my, here to when it gets to you guys.
I'll, I'll slow down, Dan. Okay, where am I?
You're a zoning hearing board.
Now that I have, I found my agenda. Zoning Hearing Board application.
I would recommend we leave this matter to the zoning hearing board.
So be it.
For a variance for a side yard setback.
All right, um, and make sure that the details are in the application, so that Bill Lair and his group know what the heck they're doing. And they got it. Right, Bill? Did I do that right?
That's okay.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Treasurers' Report for May 4th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the bills list for May 4th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not going to make any announcements. Any other business? Harry Nun, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you. The announcements are so long.
Get vaccinated.